Alright, everybody, if you stand, we'd like to please you. Welcome, everybody. Steve Osborne is Planning Director for Knight County, and we've asked him to come here and present what IPMC is.
Speed up!
Okay, can you hear me now? Because I'll yell into the microphone. Is that better? Okay, alright. Sorry for the people in the front rows. Okay. Steve Osborne is the Knight County Planning Director, and he is here to present the IPMC because it was never presented to us. Nobody knew what it was, and with the current status that's going in town and the press that we have on Facebook and such, it's time that everybody understands what this is all about. And the big thing that really got my attention was the one-year jail sentence, and that's why we sent that flyer out. Steve, go ahead and do your presentation. Thank you.
Okay, how's that? Good evening. I'm Steve Osborne with Knight County Planning Department. So I was asked to come and talk about the International Property Maintenance Code. So I'm just gonna kinda go over and give some background on it, what it's for. So the International Property Maintenance Code, or IPMC, basically it's a model code. It was developed by the International Code Council, which is a nonprofit organization. They basically develop and publish model buildings and building safety and fire prevention codes. These codes are used worldwide, basically to... They're intended for global adoption to ensure consistency in standards for structures. So in Nevada, this is one of the questions I would ask. So there is no statewide mandate. The adoption of a property maintenance code is determined by the county or incorporated city. So in Nevada, there's many counties and municipalities that have chosen to adopt a model code such as the International Property Maintenance Code. So the model code, IPMC, is not a law itself, but it's a model code that can be adopted by the jurisdiction. So Knight County did adopt the IPMC applies countywide. The code is in Chapter 15.16. Wait, wait, sorry. It's not countywide. Have you guys passed the amendment yet?
Yes.
The code is in Act 56. Is it changed to the Grand Valley or the Grand Planning District?
We're gonna... We're gonna have a Q and A after, right?
Yeah.
But you're saying it applies to Knight County?
It does.
Countywide.
Why didn't you take the mic?
We came here back here.
Please go to the stage. Why didn't you take the microphone?
Okay, could I ask you one more question then? Is there a proposed amendment?
Can you hear me? Okay. Scott Mattox, S-C-O-T-T-M-A-T-T-O-X. You're saying that it applies countywide, but in the proposed amendments, they're amending the title by inserting the name of the jurisdiction. They're inserting the name of the jurisdiction as Grand Regional Planning District and the town of Amargosa Valley. They're not inserting the name of the jurisdiction as Knight County. So the name of the jurisdiction that you're talking about here is Grand Regional Planning District. That's in the original one. In the amendment, you're adding Amargosa Valley. Is this incorrect, is what I'm holding?
That's incorrect.
Then why was this published?
I don't know what you're looking at.
This is a proposed amendment to Knight County Bill Number 2019-3, Knight County Ordinance 546, Version 1. You haven't seen this?
Scott, that is very beginning, and the one that passed was 2019-1.
Yeah, this is the amendment to that. They're trying to amend...
And they did not.
I understand that, but this is the proposal and in... Okay, so in the original, not the proposal, in the original, it says, "Name of jurisdiction, Grand Regional Planning District." Doesn't say Knight County.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay. So what you were looking at there was from 2019, and that is when the county adopted the IPMC countywide. I know that's what it says in there. It said Grand Regional Planning District. It says Amargosa Valley. But what was approved by the board was countywide.
It's not what's on the county's website.
So there is one area under the IPMC that does say, says Grand Regional Planning District. We were viewing that as a... That's basically an error that did not get corrected, but the intent, if you look at the agenda item...
Okay, stop. Let's finish the presentation.
This is incorrect. I'm sorry. It said in the agenda that there was gonna be three minutes of open comment. What happened to the open comment?
After the presentation.
Okay, after the presentation.
This is a town hall.
Right, okay. All right. Well, then I'll go ahead and wait, but once that open comment comes, then we would like to have the open floor to be able to discuss this for...
You will sit down, please.
Thank you.
Okay, so... Alright, so the IPMC, basically what it does, just to summarize it, there's kind of three main areas that it regulates. So number one is exterior areas, so outside of a building or a vacant land. So things like accumulation of garbage, trash, debris, junk vehicles, or wrecked dismantled vehicles. And that's where outside, if you have a vehicle inside of a garage or a building that isn't allowed, it's not a violation. The second main area is buildings, the actual building itself, so structural issues and fire safety requirements. So unsafe buildings, things like dilapidated buildings, or we have a roof that might be collapsing or failing or cracked foundations of buildings, broken windows, windows and doors that don't operate properly, means of egress, so being able to exit a building in event of emergency, those type of issues. And then the third main area is utilities and occupancy. So the IPMC requires basic plumbing facilities, so hot and cold water supply, sanitation, sewage disposal, so sinks, showers, toilets. Those all have to be connected to a public sewer system or private septic system.
So I've got a question for you. Did our community provide a public sewer?
Public sewer or septic.
Or waste facility? That just don't come off the same day that you go dump your load?
So it does allow for a private septic system. So... So as I stated, the state of Nevada does not require the IPMC. There is a...
Well, you guys are enforcing the law.
State law allows counties to adopt it as their property maintenance code. It does not require counties to adopt it.
But if you're enforcing the law, then you are forcing upon the county to do something, right?
So then the...
No, our county won't.
We need to wait till I...
Hello? Hey, hey, listen up. My name is Jimmy Thomas. You've already agreed that you're gonna wait till the presentation is over before you start this. When his presentation is over, if you have a question, then ask it. If you have a statement, then make it. I have many questions and statements myself, but just hold your anger in and act sympathize, at least give him a chance to finish it before we jump on him, okay?
Okay, so just the last thing I was gonna say is, the enforcement is complaint-based. So Knight County Planning Department responds to complaints that are filed with the Code Compliance Office. So CoCompliance isn't actively out, you know, looking, searching for IPMC violations. It's a response to a complaint that was filed. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
I'm gonna open up this for public comment. John Vasta. I'm gonna take him first because of his health. He needs to leave. Come on, John.
Hello. My name is John Vasta, and I've come to make a public comment. On October 25th... Oh, that's my turn, my turn. I think it's important is that we have a town code. And the county is coming here dictating to us and setting ordinances and making ordinances for the town of Amargosa is the jurisdiction of the town of Amargosa and not the county. The county has no jurisdiction inside of our boundaries making rules and regulations because we are a sovereign town. We make the ordinances and et cetera, et cetera, with agreement with the county. But the county does not dictate to us what we do and don't do. And the thing that's important is on... Is that we adopted a town board, and they accepted three chapters of the town board, and they put the rest of the chapters on hold, on reserve. And one of the chapters is on reserve, is building some code, Chapter 6. This item that they're talking about is dealing with Chapter 6. And then also, if they wanted to, they can have a zoning for Chapter 18 if it's not reserved for some other title. They can then take and take the reserved chapter and make a title for zoning. We have a title for Fire Department. And this whole process is totally out of line. As far as I'm concerned, it's illegal because the county doesn't take and say, "You do this, or you do that." They come and negotiate with us as a town board. And a town board does what the town wants done, not what they want done. And it seems that, taking a look at the county agenda following this meeting, they're gonna take and approve this. And they haven't amended the code properly. And the whole process is out of line. And what the county is doing is out of line. And what the town is doing is out of line. It's unconstitutional. It's violating your constitutional rights and my constitutional rights as citizens of Amargosa Valley. And this board should take and follow the law, not dictate to us. And would you see the three copies for the town board? And then if anybody else would like to see copies of my documents, I'll give them here to Paul, and he can distribute some of them. Yep, that's for that. No, that's... No, they're the same because at the bottom, at the bottom, you see, I see the same thing to you as the county. But you can distribute this. I made copies for the county, and I made copies for... And here's extra copies that you can hand out, and there are two different copies there, so... Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to...
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. I also handed out some other papers while they were discussing. That's Legislative Council Bureau, a letter from Pete Cochia saying that we have the right to collect all the taxes to do the special use permits, and also we are our own elected town board in a sovereign jurisdiction here. Thank you.
Could you please state and spell your last name of some sort?
Yes. Jean Adams, A-D-A-M-S. John and I were members of the original committee that formed the town of Amargosa Valley. We did it because the county was looking at these type ordinances, and they said that anything that was gonna be passed would be countywide except for the towns that were their own entity. So a lot of the people aren't here anymore. Kurt Stingle, Joe DeLee, John. There were a couple of others. They called me in because they wanted me to... Didn't just pass anything they wanted to include Amargosa Valley. And that ordinance, as was stated prior, the original said it was for the Grand Planning Zone. It did not include Knight County. It did not include Amargosa Valley. And it was not to include Amargosa, Brown Mountain, or Tonopah because we are our own entities. So why this has come up all of a sudden and how they can take somebody to court and give them a sentence of one year in jail for the way their yard looks and not having cleaned it up for the ticket, for a civil ticket, it's just unconscionable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Richard. Hello. I'm Richard Clayson, C-L-A-E-S-S-E-N-S, Antelope Town Board Member. I am a victim of lawfare.
Speaking of the mic.
I'm sorry. My neighbor didn't like that I told him to turn down his loud music. His response was to call the county, who then inspected my property and at the behest of this malcontent neighbor. They used it as revenge. I later got involved on the planning board a little bit, and I have completely reviewed the IPMC. And I have never seen such a draconian document. It has rules in there that can oppress people. It has thousand-dollar-a-day fines. The potential for misuse from this document is huge. Worse yet, it was invented in Europe, made for small-town villages or suburbs. The design of it is for tight, high-density housing, not farmland, not ranches. Anyway, I was managed to comply on my property, and I was released from the bondage. One year of hell, I called it, where I had to do everything the county people wanted me to do. I had to spend a lot of money. I am facing bankruptcy because of it. The burden on a 67-year-old man who was ill was extreme. If it hadn't been for my sons, I would have been in deep trouble. Our government shouldn't burden us like that. It's not the purpose of government. The purpose of government is to help the people. And as Jefferson said, "It's government that governs best, governs least." And I think we need to have our own set of codes, and they need to reflect our lifestyle, the cowboy life out here, the rancher life, the farmer life, and stuff in suburban codes upon us. I'm glad to be free of the county, but I see a monster looming in the background, which has made me decide to maybe try and find another place to live. And I gotta be honest, and the motivation to leave might be related to the way I was treated. Although the county people were very polite, very professional, the law is extreme. So it needs to be reworked. I appreciate your time. I will leave you with this one thought. These documents were adopted by the county a long time ago, Act 81 or something like that, maybe further back than that, Act 90. I have a relative who long ago adopted an adorable little boy. He was a cute little thing, and he just seemed to be just the joy that they needed. That little boy grew up and became stronger and powerful. Eventually found out he was a sociopath, and he killed people. True story, okay? I'm sorry. It's sad. It's a true story. But one should be careful what one adopts. And this was adopted without any real investigation or consideration for what was in the document. They just said lazy legislation. They went, "Looks good. Sign it off." We can't live like that. We need to have our own rules. And I agree with the sovereignty principle of our town board. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
My name is Christy Terranio. Most of you don't know me. I've been in the valley for 25 years. I'm Alan Hammond's wife. And C-H-R-I-S-T-I-E. Last name is T as in Tom. Now, I know that Knight County has picked and choose from the code. I have actually read the entire thing. I have read the 2024 International Property Management Code, version September 2025. Now, I find it interesting that the county supervisors have chosen those things which apply strictly to the people of the valley but not to themselves. There's a lot of issues that are in this code that were not picked and choose that apply to what the county needs to do to help Amargosa Valley be a better valley. Number one, we don't have zoning laws in this city, in this township. So that's an issue, but one which we don't want to deal with. We had somebody go around and picking and choosing which property was commercial, residential, or agricultural. Now, I know this because my property was listed as residential on 373. It has now been switched over to commercial because that is a commercial highway. But the county has to have responsibility as well, not just the people inside the county. And I've kinda taken a little notes when I was reading this. And so it's actually... We list it as the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, but it's actually the international council code that we are dealing with. Road access is on this list, which they have not addressed. We have a lot of unstructured roads that people just drive on in the valley that maybe should be blocked off then so that we're not disturbing the natural habitat of our desert. Grading and drainage. Oh, my gosh. I live at the very end of Farm Road, all the way on the dirt road towards Morgan's Pit. Now, my understanding was we were supposed to have culverts put in there because we flood. We just flood horribly. We didn't get culverts. We gotta grow this maintenance, and we flood every year. So is this not something the county should actually be addressing under this drainage system listed in the code? Again, they're not dealing with what they need to be dealt with. Now weeds. Now, if your neighbor don't like your weeds, those are natural weeds in the desert. Don't clear all your desert land. You made a pouf dirt. We need rain to make the pouf dirt go away. So we need to leave our weeds alone. Our plants are structurally counted as weeds. Now, we have the whole thing with smell. Now, I live on Joshua, down by the pistachio farm, which has a sulfur smell. Are we gonna shut down that pistachio farm because of this? No, we get revenue from that. And let's talk about the motor vehicles. Anybody who drives down Farm Road knows that. Every property on Farm Road on the south side needs to just be closed then. That's all I'm gonna say. But let's not pick and choose what we want in our code. Let the people of the valley... Look at us! This is a tremendous outpouring of people that has never come to the county... I don't come to the county board meetings. I only kinda dissuade them against it, as we know. But look at these people. This is a concern of this community. We have reason to be concerned. And everybody knows that I don't really speak up that much because I'm pretty much a very quiet person living at the end of the valley, next to California. But look at them. They all deserve an answer. Not just his answer. We deserve one from the county supervisors. They should be sitting here answering us today as well. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm Jimmy Thomas again, T-H-O-M-A-S. I too was a past town board member and in fact Chairman of the Board. I too was a past town board member and, in fact, chairman of the board in 2019 when one of the board, one of the members of the Board of County Commissioners came to me and personally told me that when the county went over 50,000 people, the IPMC was going to come into effect. That was a bald-faced lie. State does not do that. Because your population grows or withers does not bring laws into effect. I don't like to disagree with Mr. Bosta.
And didn't I say hi to you up here sometime?
He's wrong about this being a sovereignty.
Sorry.
The only way that this town could make its own ordinances outside of public health and safety and taking care of the parks and other buildings like that is to be an incorporated town. An elected town board and an advisory town board, as far as the Board of County Commissioners is concerned, are the same and are still answerable to the ordinances that the county commission passes, regardless of what you think. That's, that's it. We were a town, and we can, certain things we can control and certain things we cannot control. As far as the IPMC is concerned, not only is this a very authoritarian bill, and you, Steve, as the director of planning, have way too much authority, way too much. The bill is insidious. It does not just pertain to building safety and trash and all that. It gets right down into the fact that if a code officer wants to come into your house and inspect your house and finds that your cabinets are dirty or your children haven't had a bath, then they can cite you for that and take you to court for it. And that's in the code that they can do it, all right? It's insidious. It's, Ralph said draconian. I'd go farther than that. I think it's hit and rest. It's people trying to control your life. I think that the Board of County Commissioners could start with the head of planning, should go back and have a bill to amend the IPMC and completely exempt all the rural areas, Amargosa Valley, Crystal, Beatty, Tonopah, all those small places, just exempt us from the IPMC and let us do it ourselves. That would be the easiest way to do it. You wouldn't have 200 people that are ready to scalp. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
My name's Colette Johnson, J.U.H.N.S.O.N. The first thing I want to say is this is a heated, contentious issue. Please try to keep your head. Second thing I want to say, I was at the court case last month, and I heard the county employees talking about the property that they were prosecuting, which should not be a criminal prosecution. And they were malicious. And they defined his errors in his property arbitrarily. There was a whole lot of, the word "potential" was used more than "fact." And that's malicious. There's no definition for cleanliness, so that word needs to be removed from the IPMC. And then, I want, I want you to know that Amargosa takes care of its own. This community has had lots of things happen, including when human waste was being put on farm fields. And this community shut it down. Because this community takes care of its own. When there is a loss by our people, this community steps up and helps them out. Right now, there are people attempting to help out the two people who I believe are being maliciously prosecuted right now. And our community is stepping up, so we don't need the IPMC codes. We need those removed, and you cannot convince me that that have, that that code that literally had the words "corrupt planning area", you can't convince me that it meant all of Nye County. No, it did not. They would not have written "perump" if they meant Nye County. We don't want it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colette.
Gentlemen?
Oh, we got to get together sometime.
Hey, boys. I don't know your names.
Can you state your last name?
My name's Darryl Wade, W.A.D.E. I'm a resident here since 2006. I have a question. You talked about vehicles and cars on property and trailers and stuff. If they're junk, that's one thing. But if you have titles on everything, are you telling us you're limiting us to how many we can have?
The IPMC says that they have to be registered.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to be, they have to be registered vehicles, camping, racking, jumping.
Okay, okay. Let's give, let's give Mr. Wade his time. He's asking questions, and let Mr. Wade.
Well, I just want to make sure that, you know, the people are treated right here and not some arbitrary rule comes in and goes, "We're going to get you because you got too many vehicles." The day that the courts and government come in and start telling us how many things we can have in life, our lives are over. It's nothing but a totalitarian society at that point. We don't want it here. Take it, go somewhere else. We'll vote it out, every one of us, and we'll get other people if we have to go door-to-door. We do not want it. We do not need it. I appreciate your time being here. I do. And thank you for answering that question. But that was a big question because there's a lot of us that have stuff on our properties. And then you tell us, "Oh, it all has to be licensed. It has to be insured." Some of it's in repair in different stages, and we can't license it because we can't drive it there. So, you know, there comes another point, "Well, it's potentially a hazard." Bullshit. It just sits there. The hazard is the people that come on our property without orders or without asking us. They just, "Oh, we can do it. Well, I've got a shotgun, too. I can do it, too." And that's not a threat against your life. That's just a common factor. I see somebody roaming around my property at night. I'm going to drop a couple shells over their head, and if they don't like it, they better leave. And again, I'm not threatening you. I'm not threatening your county or your society or anybody in the government. I'm stating a fact. I have private property signs up for a reason. Once the government says, "We can come on your property without your permission," what the hell are we doing here? I appreciate your time, I really do.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.
You can speak. Is there anything you want to say back to me?
No, I said, "Thank you, Mr. Wade."
Okay. I know everybody out here's got more questions. Get in line. Don't wait for us to ask all your questions.
Good afternoon. My name is Clifford Powell, C.L.I.F.F.O.R.D., P.O.W.E.L.L. And my parents bought the property that I live on now in 1991. So, I've been out here pretty much since then. And this valley has changed, but it hasn't changed. And what I mean by that is that we, yes, it has grown a little, but nothing compared to the way that perump has grown at our expense. And that, we see that growth through the Walmart, Smiths, Albertsons, all that stuff that's coming in. Where do we all shop? Perump. We used to have to go to Las Vegas when I first moved out here because the only thing that was in perump was PJs. And it was much like Ruby's or Martell's, but a little bit bigger. But we live out here because this is the lifestyle we want. These cars that you want to, want us to remove from our property? Let me ask you something. How much of Amargosa have you actually seen? All of it? Have you, have you driven around all of Amargosa Valley?
I've seen a lot of it, yes.
How many auto parts stores have you seen out here? There's not one. And those cars can be parts cars so that we can get one that we do have running, keep it on the road. So, you wanting to take those away from us, well, you know, that's quite an issue for us because if we've got the title for it, then it's ours just as much as the property that it's sitting on. And we don't want you or anybody else to come in there wanting to take it, just like we don't want you coming in wanting to take our land because maybe, maybe you've changed the code to include creosote bushes as weeds. Because the way that the IPMC is so loosely, vaguely written, it can include anything. And there's no indication that it's up to the county or the discretion of the inspector to make that decision of whether creosote bushes are included in the vegetation part of it. We don't want this, this IPMC in this valley. We have a unique valley, and it's a farm, as has been mentioned, it's a farm valley. But as I look out in the group here tonight, I see a lot of the familiar faces that I've seen for a long time and some new ones. But we're here for the same reason, to keep what we came out here for. And I want to thank everybody for coming tonight because this is very important. And our lifestyle is being challenged in many ways, not just by this. Think of all the solar stuff that's, they're one, that, all this stuff we're faced with. We're the dumping ground of Nye County, it seems like. And we're the redheaded stepchild that gets mistreated by the county every chance that they get, it appears.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you. One, one last word. Look it up. Kerbelitch, you have the right to your castle. And that can start at the fence.
Hi, my name is Justice Evans.
Spell your last name, please.
E.V.A.N.S. J.U.S.T.U.S. is my first name. I have a 6 minute, 22, or 7 minute video of your people.
This is three minutes of public comment. You can, you can do.
Oh, the video?
You can do the video with Steve after.
Okay, we'll do the video afterwards, but it shows your member of your community that's trying to impose these fake laws into our community when our town board won't even accept the same thing on their properties. If you're going to inspect our properties, you need to inspect our town board because they're the ones who are enforcing this into our community and bringing it to our doorstep. So, they should be the first ones on the chopping block, not us, not our community. So, if you want to, if you want to put people on chopping blocks, pull them off. But start at the top and work your way down, okay? We are hardworking, trying to provide for our families, trying to make a ripple for our heads, trying to keep a vehicle going that we can have a way for our family to make it to and from work or to and from, to be in our groceries. We are 40 miles away from getting the nearest groceries at a reasonable price, at a price that's not being marked up. We, we do pay it to support our local community so we can have groceries in our town. But at the same time, you got to realize, my tire blows. My alternator goes out. I have to have my other vehicles in my yard so I can repair that, okay? I know personally, I've been called in by a neighbor that's been vicious and said 52 times, "My kid's playing in the yard." Has had the cop called because my kid's making too much noise, okay? And as a local town board member that has done this tyranny, and you're going to this community little fucking vendetta that's came onto my property because all else, all of her other and her husband's exports have not been able to succeed in crushing us and making us move away from this valley? I will not move from this valley. I will fight at the tooth and nail, okay? Until I go away with a pair of handcuffs and I'll go with a smile on my face. I will not be suppressed. I dealt that in the city by every gang that was around me, being a white boy in an all-black neighborhood, in an all Hispanic neighborhood, being in all these neighborhoods in the city. Last thing I want to do is raise my kids in your gangs and all the bullshit that goes on in the city. So, if you want to bring that to my community, I tell you, F off and get out of my community. We don't want that shit here. We don't want the drugs. We don't want the problems. We don't want our children being forced into that problem that come from being from a community that's from the city that can either get shot or be part of the block. One of the two is your options. Do you want that for your community? No. So, you want to continue to force that over our community? Get the fuck out of my valley.
Mr. Evans, your turn, this is up. Thank you.
Sorry about the language. But God bless.
My name is Lenny Davis, D.A.B.I.S. I'm probably the newest resident. I've been here three years. In my previous life, I was a special agent with the Department of Homeland Security. I did a lot of work with overseas compacts, treaties. The one thing that I see about this, and I've read the IPMC, is it appears to me to be boilerplate that really doesn't apply to the valley here. And that is my biggest concern, okay? It's pretty much, and I, I own a business, and I own businesses. I know what's, I know what it's like to say, "Oh, well, gee, let's, let's get a set of, you know, standard operating procedures. Let's see what's on the internet." Well, to me, the IPMC is exactly that. Somebody is lazy. They didn't want to sit down and say, "Okay, Amargosa Valley, what do you guys want? What do you want in those?" And that's, and I understand your position, sir. I'm not, I'm not throwing shade at you. But I, I see this from my eyes of 35 years in the government, and I go, "This, this was laziness, pure and simple." Somebody went, "Hey, here's a, here's a boilerplate that we can use, and we'll just check that block. Hey, here's our, here's our municipal code." It's not really adaptable in what really goes on in this county, or excuse me, in this town. It's not really adaptable in what really goes on in this county, or excuse me, in this town. It may work for Parona. It might work for Beatty or Tonopah, but it isn't working here, from what I see. So I myself, and I've told Carolyn before, I've got a lot of experience in putting these kind of things, grants and this kind of stuff together. I have no problem in helping do that. And I think at some point, we ought to see what we need to do as citizens to say, "Okay, look, this is our town. And this is what we think our municipal code should be." Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny.
My name is Victor Fuentes, F.U.E.N.T.E.S. So, you know, I wanted to remind the Amargosa people, everybody here, remember the power you have, okay? The elected official, we elect them to serve us. They work for us, okay? And we pay them to work for us. They don't dictate to us what they want. We dictate to them what we want as a people, as a we, the people, okay? That's how it works. Always remember that. You have the power, not them, okay? You are the boss, not them. They work for you. That's number one. Number two, when the gentleman was doing the presentation, one of the things that, when he started to read the presentation, I already went offline. Why? Because he said, "The code is made by an international body, okay? Private and not for profit." Now, those people come from where? From Mongolia? From Uganda? From Russia? From Cuba? They live different than we live here, okay? They have different culture, all right? They are no elected officials. I have to tell you something. The problem that we have is not so much with the elected officials, but with the own elected. They are the ones doing the damage because we cannot fire them. See, these people over here, we can fire them in elections. See, but the own elected, they are doing the damage like those, that international body. How is there some international body going to run the Constitution? Because that's what they do with this international law, international court. They're going to run the Constitution to deprive us from our rights, our resources and our lives, okay? And so we do not accept that code. Number three, number three, listen to me Amargosa, please. The reason for which they want to attack you is because you have water, you have power, you have streets, you have well already developed. They don't go to the middle of nowhere to do this. Why they come here? Let me tell you something. You have a very, very valuable piece of property. And what I recommend you to do is from now on in Amargosa, if you want to buy an acre of land, better land, it will be $150,000. Give him value to what you have. Give him value to what you have. And if you want to buy a property with wealth and power, then it will be $250,000. You want to buy, buy. You're not going to take it from us. You're not going to take it from us.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes.
So that is very important. So open your eyes, open your soul. And we say no to that code. And we're going to write a letter to the commissioner, to the governor. And all of us, we're going to sign it. We're going to put it in Ruby Market, we're going to put it in every store.
Mr. Fuentes, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, residents of Amargosa Valley. I'm Wayne Brotherton. I've lived in this valley 30 years, exactly 30 years. I'm going to give you an opportunity right now. If you can't understand what I'm saying, if my diction is not clear, if you're confused by any remarks I make, speak up now. If you don't, tough, all right? I haven't seen no objection yet. Some years ago, there was an effort in this valley to create a business license that required the sheriff's deputy and everyone else in this valley who performed any type of work, regardless of what it was, to get a business license and pay a fee to the town of Amargosa Valley. That's the kind of stuff you get. It's a lot like communism. Joseph McCarthy was right. We have now a town board right here that was placed in those chairs by Joni Eastley in a fit of temper where she despised the people in Amargosa Valley, hated our guts. And this was simultaneously about the time that federal government, state government, county were all fixing to arrest the entire town board and send them to a renovated prison in Carson City for federal crimes, state crimes and county crimes. It didn't work. But Joni Eastley, in a fit of temper, had this town board created as elected town board and bypassed the petition that had been signed by 119 or 129 people in the valley, not me, for a feasibility study to be presented to Nye County to look into the creation of an elected town board for Amargosa Valley. Joni Eastley, like I said, hated Amargosa Valley. And she stepped in and took the reins and created the elected town board that's sitting right here now. Simultaneously, the people in Parona were given the right to dissolve their town board and we were abandoned. They told us to take the hike. I have raised hell about this ever since. And no one seems to be of any concern. So we go and we get this type of government. And they're going to take charge and they're going to dictate every aspect of your life. We moved up here 30 years ago after 25-plus years in Las Vegas Valley. And it was exactly this kind of thing that ran us out. I did not like, they were encroaching on us. We bounced around for 27 years, actually, all over the valley, trying to get ahead of Californians running up our back with the crazy notions that they come up with. And they, Warrnambool was just up here tonight. And we have to listen to that. So we're sitting up here defenseless. And I did not like what they did in Clark County and left. And I sure don't like what they're doing here in Nye County. This is not why we moved to Amargosa Valley. It has nothing to do with making this a better neighborhood. This is a farm area. I hate to tell them that, you know? They act like this is a metropolis and that there's high-rise towers and all that. Or it was like when they were trying to sell the airport up there at the intersection.
Mr. Brotherton, your three minutes is up, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Your three minutes is up.
Okay, enough.
Okay, we get three minutes, right? My three minutes says questions for you guys. So that the whole town.
Misty, I'm sorry, can you state and spell your last name?
E.V.A.N.S., Misty Evans.
Thank you.
Okay, my question. My kids are raised, I can bring this stuff. Got a whole bunch of parents in here. You said, "Steve, I'm addressing this question to you." This is complaint based. So if somebody makes a complaint, that puts you on the drop off. Do I have to know? I'm asking a yes or no question.
Uh, yes, it is complaint based.
Okay, thank you. Next. So Carolyn, does that mean, because you represent our town, CPS wars? My kids are grown, I can bring this fucking on. And three months in this town? We have CPS wars. You piss somebody off? Guess what? CPS shows up here at all. I beat CPS for 18 years, actually 20. So that means I don't like you. You know I don't. I'm not disrespectful to you. I do not file complaints about you. This is a small town. If I don't like you, I get to turn you into the cops? How fucking old are we? This is worse than the CPS wars. How old are we? Are we five? Tip for tat? Where is your cops, all of you guys? You guys are on board with this? The paper says it is a possibility. So how do we stop it? Please tell me your charge. I'm not asking the board, I'm asking you. You came with a presentation. How do we be heard? Because what we're doing is not working. And we're doing it the way paperwork is meant to be done. I'm a federal employee too. Why are we included? Who decided that Amargosa, small town, this is tip for tat? The whole thing that is going to get us in trouble and go to jail for a year is if somebody don't like you? That's how we get our kids taken. You know what we do to team up to fucking keep our kids? I have everybody's kids. Who else raises mine? Because that has my house meticulous. And because we get turned in for stupid shit. That is the government thing too. So it's basically, I don't like you. Are you going to pay me my debt of my stuff and my property? Is the county going to do that? And the paper says community one. Who's going to fund our town? And who's going to pay for the year of three huts and a cot because we didn't do our chores? Who's paying that? Who's responsible for that tax? Three huts and a cot have been married to Indians that miss my children since the fire started. Guess what? They don't want to be home because they don't want to follow rules. So because we don't clean our yard? Because somebody else said to me, "Help me because they don't like us." My mom said, "You have to clean your yard because I'm not doing my chores because you're not doing yours." That is literally what you're proposing that's. We pulled together. I can't stick the entire turnariff against. I can't do shit. But I can trade. I can trade what I got for what you can do. And I can pay you to help me in my stuff. But who's going to pay for the year of time that we do? That's three huts and a cot, government time. Who's paying for that? Are you going to pay for it? Is the town board going to pay for that? And who's going to take care of the family that the breadwinner went to jail for a year? You guys are paying to feed and house. Who's going to take care of our property with us? Because we've got to do everything else. Can you answer my questions? That's my three minutes. My three minutes is questions. And I would appreciate answers from all of you. Because I ask all of you. You represent us. You are our government. So what are you telling them are answers? Please answer my questions.
What is your question?
Did you not listen though? God damn.
I hear you, but what are you asking me? Because you don't like me, so what's your question?
No, that makes it personal. That is not.
You said that.
So you completely disregard every word I said?
No, not at all.
Then what did I say?
Not at all.
Please give me a recap of what my questions were. Were you listening?
Yes.
Then what did I say?
Basically that we are, uh...
What were my questions?
I asked, basically, a tip for tat. And CPS, when somebody gets popped or whatever, CPS is called.
Okay, so get this, guys. You all heard every word I said. I said it in terms my fucking grandkids can understand. And I'm bored anymore. Stop. You can't even under... Richard, did you hear any of the questions I asked? Could you repeat them, Carol?
Well, no, I can't repeat word for word.
Go.
What?
I can't repeat word for word.
Any of the questions?
And I asked. Your three minutes are up.
No. I asked questions.
The three minutes are up.
I myself is for the help, okay?
I know.
That's why I came on here, to be able to help.
Yes.
To help our people.
I know.
I myself is why I'm here. I love this valley.
I know you do.
I love my people.
I know you don't.
Okay? So that's why I'm here. As far as everybody else is concerned, they can answer their questions. My whole thing is united we stand, divided we fall. So, you know, we can't allow these people to come in here to divide us. We have to stand together. As Collette Johnson said, we help our people here. We roll up our sleeves and we help each other, okay? So that's why I came on.
Thank you. Steve, can you answer my question that I asked, also about who's going to pay for those three huts and a cot? Did you take everybody to jail over CPS wars? Is this inordinate now?
I don't know anything about CPS.
I'm not that patient. I said, "Is this law in a..."
That's enough.
No, I have a question. That was in my three minutes. Is this law in a... No.
Yes.
Okay, can you tell me how it states that if I don't like you, I can call the cops on you? And that can come... I don't care. My three minutes were questions, not your three minutes. Answer them. It's current comment, why can I not?
Tell the comments you comment, okay?
No, I asked questions. Those, no.
Officer, every.
Okay.
You're going to take me to jail for asking a question?
No.
Asking one question.
That's embarrassing. Please ask my cops because you can't answer a yes or no question, Carolyn? Blow some fucking balls.
I don't know how many of you folks know me here. My name is Annie Bell, B-E-L-L. And my family and I moved to the valley in 2003. And I was going to tell a little bit of the story. Because I left last year and I moved up north. I had a good job here in the valley. And I moved up north and I was making good money. The county that I moved to had laws very similar to this. And I was making, I was making $178,000 a year. And I walked away from that and came back here because I knew that Nye County was free. And I also didn't suspect that the small county I moved to up north had those type of laws. Because it's something like you find in Vegas, right? And once I got there and realized that, I realized I couldn't live like that. That I had to do something. So I left and I came back to the valley. And the point that Mr. Fuentes made about this being a government by the people is I learned from that experience that we need to educate ourselves. You know, and don't wait until there's an issue like this to know what's going on in your community. You know, because if this had been addressed some time ago, before it became, "Oh my God, people are going to jail." You know, if we didn't know, then it could have maybe been addressed before there was an issue. And that's my responsibility as a citizen, as well as your responsibility. I'm not saying that people fell down on their job and stuff and it's all their own fault. But the best way to fight things like this is to get in front of them, right? If you want to stop something like this, make sure your voice is heard. You might have to make sure it's heard the right way, but make sure your voice is heard, you know? And if we stand together and we walk together and make sure people know that it's not just one person and not a whole bunch of different opinions, but that we all feel the same way, those of us who do. You know, there may be people in this room who don't feel that way. But all of us that do, and we want to stop this... But all of us that do, and we want to stop this? It's up to us to educate ourselves and make sure the county knows what we're saying, that the state knows what we're saying. The town board folks, I think they already know what we're saying. And I don't know that they approve of this. I don't know. I just come back. So I just found out about this, so I'm not gonna say that I know exactly what's going on. But I do know what I've learned I do not like. So if there's a way that we can combine our voices so that we're louder? Then let's do that. Let's do that and make sure everybody's heard it, okay? That's all I got.
Thank you, Annie.
My name is Kimberly Koenig, K-O-E-N-I-G. This month is six years I've been in Amargosa Valley. We moved out here, my father and I, because we wanted to live in the rural community. This community has helped me more than anybody could possibly know. I went through a really rough year in two thousand and twenty-four, but my community stood up and backed me. I had a lot of medical issues and they were there for me. We do not want an H O A. That's basically what you're trying to do to us. And we won't stand for it. This is our community. Let's stand together and keep it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Robert Huttson, H-U-T-C-H-I-S-O-N, Robert, R-O-B-E-R-T. I've been in the valley since about nineteen ninety-nine. I'm the one who was prosecuted in Amargosa for the infractions. I just wanna state that, you know, it doesn't apply to our valley in the version that the county commissioner signed in two thousand and nineteen. And it is very incredibly vague. And up to the code enforcement people come to your property to make that decision on their own. We had them in court and they stated that. So if I had a question, I'd say, why do you guys not have a standard for any of the things in the codes? Cleanliness, safety, or anything for any of your code enforcement people to have as a consistent role? Standard? Definitions? Why does that not exist?
Well, so it is, it's a model code and that's... It doesn't have those definitions in the model. So there's definitions, but not the ones that you stated. So I think there is a possibility of adding definitions.
Well, in your code, it does have cleanliness, safety, and thing, because that's what I was prosecuted.
It doesn't have definitions of those terms.
So how can you? My question would be then, is how can you enforce a law that doesn't have a definition?
Like you said, sometimes things are vague in the code. And, you know, those sort of things. You can look at those and I think, you know, that's a good point to make.
Could we say we might have overreached going this far this quickly without this setup before? I know it's above your brick pay grade, I get that. But, I mean, I had code enforcement people that I talked to two of them. I'm forgetting names. The first lady that cited me, I called her office. She, I tried to remedy the situation at the time and talked to her. She told me point blank on the phone, the only way I could remedy the situation is, is I had to demolish all my trailers and show proof of it. I could not sell them, I could not give them away or get rid of them. And she lied in open court and said we never talked. Then Suzie or Susan, Ryanhold or whatever, the code enforcement, the last one, Ryanhold. She told me that, you know, we did talk, she admitted that. I found her on the road with the sheriff in the car with her and we had a nice cordial conversation. I've known her. And she told me, I just got your case, I just became the code enforcement out here. When I talked to her, I'm like, okay. And she said, I'm not familiar with your case. I will get back to you on information on what you need to do to fix the problem. She never called me. Never had a communication with me again. The next time I saw her was in Beatty Justice Court. I think that's a failure of your office, of not following through, not helping out at all. Yes, I should have personally followed up multiple times, which I will admit, I did not do. I did a lot of cleanup on my property, but I didn't do enough to your standards. I get that. But it's, like everybody said that's come up here. I stayed out here, I was a teenager when I came out here. I chose to stay in this valley because I thought I could put double lights together and just close up things and use them as storage, like everybody does. Everybody in this county, I mean, in Nevada, it happens a lot, in every county almost. And I thought I could, you know, do my handyman business and keep fridges and freezers inside the buildings was my plan. And keep, you know, woods and bricks and supplies. And for them to say that vehicles that are not operating because I haven't gotten around to fixing them? Literally abandoned vehicles because I don't have them registered or insured? Is ridiculous in my point of view. They can say they're not operating, that's fine. But to actually in open court say they're abandoned vehicles when my personal property is sitting on my property? How are they allowed to even state that's abandoned? Do you know why they even have the right to call it that? Because abandoned makes it sound like it's abandoned on the side of the street, so they have the right to grab it and take it away. Well, it's on my personal property. If they wanna call it something else, that's fine with me. But to say it's abandoned is disingenuous.
I don't know why they called it that.
Yeah, they did it in open court multiple times. And like in open court, I'm, you know, it's readily available, the transcripts and stuff. I'm getting a copy. But it, everything they stated, and my lawyer pointed this out. This is what I have a problem with the IPMC codes. And interpreting it the way you wanna interpret it is... My lawyer asked the two code enforcement people that took the pictures and said, what in those pictures is unclean, unsafe, or unsanitary in those pictures? Every single one of them came back and said, it could be if this happened, it could be if this happened, it could be if this happened. So their answer was, truthfully, nothing was. They were just saying, well, rodents could live in your cars. Well, if it rains, water could be trapped in here and grow mosquitoes. If somebody trespassed on your property, they could fall over that piece of metal on the ground and get hurt. Nothing was actually unsafe, unclean, or unsanitary in their own words. They always use the term, it could be. Is that, that's the problem I'm having with the IPMC code. Is if you're gonna convict somebody to go to jail especially, on something that could be? I thought the letter of the law, even the IPMC, says you have to have done it, not that it could be, correct?
Well, I mean, it does say that these conditions have to exist.
So if they kept saying could be, and I'm honestly, I never once, Michael DeWey asked them to clarify, not one of them ever used the word, this is what is dangerous? Or this is what's unsafe? Well, my court case, it never was stated that way. Michael asked numerous times. And every single time, they went back to, well, if somebody passing by could walk on your property and trip over the metal on your property? That's not unsafe. That's if somebody decided to trespass on my property, it could happen. If it rains and I didn't mitigate the rain that was sitting in, they were using an old hot tub I had that I was trying to fix. As it could collect water and grow mosquitoes. That could cause an unsafe situation. But for me, I'll put this at it. If that's the case, then I could put bleach in it to kill them. So it would never get to the point where it was unsafe, or unsanitary. Or I could tip it over and drain it. So I was convicted for two different issues. One wasn't even present when they took the photos, which was, yes, I rented out to somebody that I did not have the proper hookups and so on on my property at the time. I remedied the problem when the Perump Regional Electrician came out. I shut the whole property down, I cut the pipes off, I moved the power off the property. But I still prosecuted on a ticket that supposedly if I fixed the problem, I wouldn't be prosecuted on it. But I still got prosecuted on it. And then I was prosecuted on the other ticket as unclean, unsanitary, because I had metal frames on the ground, I had dilapidated trailers on the property. But I wasn't even given the option from your own code enforcement to get rid of them even. And when I went to court, they said that was an option. I never knew that. I saw it in the ticket when I got it, yes. But when a lady from your office flat out told me I couldn't do that? My hands are tied. I don't have the exorbitant amount of money that would take to hire people to come in and help me torch these trailers apart. Because that's what they said, that they didn't care if they get recycled. They had to go to the dump. And the dump's always full, as everybody knows here. But they're just, it's not feasible for a normal financial person to do all this in the first place. And I never got any other information. And so it's like, that's why I didn't talk to you guys. And I didn't know about appealing, but you guys don't have an appeal board. What are you guys?
Bobby, the three, we went way over the...
I appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good one.
I do have a question for you two. The code enforcement people, because there are no definitions, it's really vague. And did they get a set of what is acceptable, unacceptable? Do they, what are their qualifications to go out there and make these judgments? Because, I mean, the one L, I just recently found out she's with the dog catcher. So a dog catcher, which we have trouble getting out here for the dogs. When we have the dog catcher as a code enforcement agent, they're going around, you know, when they're here, they see things and whatever. Does that cloud their judgment? Do they have a specific set of criteria or protocol to draft these citations? And that's my, one of my main concerns. What are their qualifications? Because these are very serious charges.
Well, there's not any kind of special licensing or anything like that to be a code enforcement officer.
That's kinda scary.
It's, I mean, they're basically using the IPMC as their guide and they're using their judgment as to whether or not. They think it's a violation.
But would you agree that, I mean, these examples tonight are classic of everybody's complaint? There's no specifics in there. It is extremely vague. And there's a lot of what ifs. But I think, you know, I'd like to know that they've got some training, what they're looking for. I was under the impression that they take pictures from the outside of the property. They don't even go on the property. They make appointments with these people to meet with them.
Right, and you are correct about that. They don't go onto the property. They're supposed to take photos of the street, public right of way, to go on the property and get a warrant. So, but I agree with you, there is a lot of vagueness to that, to that code, the IPMC. I like the idea about additional definitions and clarifying what some of these things actually mean. I think that's a good idea.
And would you agree that, you know, the things in here, because they've all got handouts, just don't apply here? I mean, a lot of it is just fluff. And to make it for the entire county? You know, I can go to Perump, certain parts of Perump, and the skirting on the trailers not there, the areas are something like we see here. And nothing's happening that we know of. But again, you know, it's, they say it's complaint based and what if, what if, you know, we want out, we want out of this? And so does the rest of district want? Because I think that's where that's going.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so as I stated earlier, the IPMC is not a requirement, it's not mandated by the state. There's not an NRS, it's not you have to have it. It's up to, maybe the county commissioners decide where it applies to and where it doesn't. And if the town of Amargosa doesn't want it or wants to amend it, you certainly can request that of the board of county commissioners.
Anybody next?
My name is Ronald Czechorosky, that's like Czechoslovakia. Last name spelled C-Z-E-C-H-O-R-O-S-K-Y. I've been coming to this valley since the mid-seventies. I've lived in Nye County since nineteen ninety-three, in the Front Valley. And I'm on my last leg to move here. I purchased some property to beat some work that I'm working on. And I, right now, I wanna say, for you people that have spoken already, and there'll be other people speaking from time to time. I can share your passion and I can understand your frustration. But we all need to be a little more better at how we express ourselves. And I wanna start with the town board here. And I'm looking at my time, I don't wanna run over because I'm sure they're gonna wanna get rid of me. Okay, first of all, a township is thirty-six square miles. It's a survey of its terms. If you go to Perump and you're on one sixty going in, you're gonna see Perump, elevation something. If you're on three seventy-two, you're gonna see that sign there. If you're on the one sixty coming from Vegas, you'll see that sign. If you put those signs together on a map, where they are on a map, and look at it, it's gonna, do you know thirty-six square miles? That's the town of Perump, where those signs border. The rest of that is Perump Valley, which is Nye County. Okay, this valley is Amargosa Valley. Now, if the post office wants to call it Amargosa Valley, that's their business. But this is part of Nye County, Amargosa Valley. So I don't know what thirty-six square miles you people, you folks have jurisdiction over, but that's what a township is. Okay, so I suggest you folks and a lot of these people here that wanna get this on? Really look at what they're saying. And this whole ordinance thing, it's a square peg that they're trying to force into a round hole. Okay? And if you all get together and temper the passion and put your minds together and investigate and really, really get it said, get everything said that has to be said. I think everybody's gonna realize that this is a lot of waste of time here. Okay? And nobody wants to live like this because there's a statement which is legal. What is reasonable and prudent? Okay? So that's where you gotta start from. And then who is harmed? Anybody who's complaining has to be harmed somehow. So how are the people complaining harmed? Okay, now I'm sure that these guys here can, you know, be called in if there's child abuse and there's all these things that are logical things that people deal with in daily living. So we can continue our lives and be reasonable prudence, get along, be civil with each other, and start now and figure out what is really gonna work. Okay? And thank you for your time, Chris.
Thank you.
I'll be seeing you later.
Scott Maddox, S-C-O-T-T, M-A-T-T-O-X. Is Bruce Jabour still here?
Yes.
Bruce, oh, there you go. For those of you that do not know, Bruce is our, he's our representative on the Nye County Board of Commissioners. And I tried to reach out to you like three times and no response. So we'll, I wanted to have a little private conversation, but we'll have it in public, I guess. First off, let me ask you. Nevada Revised Statute two sixty-nine, are you familiar with that? Okay, well, Nevada Revised Statute two sixty-nine is what allows towns like us to create our own town and have our own town board. And it specifically talks about disincorporated cities, towns, and towns formed by a board of county commissioners, et cetera. So we don't have to be an incorporated town to have our own town board and do our own things. Now, let's go to Nye County. Nye County. If you go to the Nye County website, is that correct website? Am I on the right one? Okay, so on the Nye County website, there's a link for the Nye County Code. Are you familiar with the Nye County Code? Bruce? But I'm asking you a que-- yeah, it's my time to talk. I'm asking a question. Are you familiar with the Nye County Code? Because I think Steve is the wrong person that we should be dealing with because what gets voted on is by the Board of Nye County Commissioners. Steve doesn't vote to put the IPMC in place, right? It's not your deal, right? You're just the paid guy that you're responsible for. All right, so the Nye County Code, let me tell you what it says. As authorized by Sections 244.116 through, of the Nevada Revised Statutes 269 that we were just talking about, blah, 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 they're able to create this code. This code shall be known as the Nye County Code and it shall be sufficient to refer to this code as the Nye County Code in any prosecution for the violation of any provisions thereof, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Then it goes on. This code, this is Section 1.01.040. This code consists of all general ordinances. The IPMC, I would assume, is the IPMC considered a general ordinance? Bruce, do you know?
Pardon?
Do you guys know, is it a...
A portion of it.
Steve, is it part of the, because it's important to what I'm gonna say here. It's part of the code, right?
Yes, it is part of the code.
Okay. Okay, so this code consists of all general ordinances, including the IPMC, applicable to all unincorporated areas of Nye County, except in areas where a town board form of government exists its authority over a subject matter pursuant to an inconformance with Chapter 269 of the Nevada Revised Statutes. Nye County titles or chapters relating specific areas shall be applicable to a specific area as prescribed in this chapter. So it says, the Nye County Codes are applicable except where we have our own town board. The codes are not, they're not good here. So the fact that the code enforcement is even coming out here is in violation of the Nye County Code. Correct? Would you say that, Steve?
I would say I would have to talk with the DA's office.
Well, you probably should. To find out if what you're doing is legal. Let me ask, and I'll ask you, Steve, because Bruce doesn't want to answer his questions. And I'm not mad at Bruce. I mean, I'm literally telling you, you're my representative. And you wouldn't even talk to me. You wouldn't call me. You wouldn't text me. You wouldn't do anything. So I don't know. Let me ask you, is the IPMC, is it civil or criminal code?
I believe the penalty...
No, no, I'm not asking you believe. You're the expert here. You're here to tell us. Is it a civil or criminal code?
It's a criminal code because it's a misdemeanor.
It is a criminal code. Okay, and because it's a misdemeanor. And what does it say in the code that is a criminal code?
I don't have that right here, but...
Okay. All right, well, my point is, is that this conversation here shouldn't even be happening because Nye County has no jurisdiction here with their codes. I mean, they say so. And their own code, they say they don't have any jurisdictions, but their codes don't have jurisdiction. I'm not saying Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, et cetera. The codes have no jurisdiction here, but yet here we are.
Scott?
Now, my three minutes is up. Okay, I would say that in the next meeting, it's obvious that none of us want to properly make this code, nor zoning. So, thank you. And I gotta go after that, L-A-B-O-S-S-I-E-R-E. For everybody who doesn't know, that gentleman was not in charge when this got voted on. We all know who was in charge of planning back then. Also, at that meeting in 2019, some good-looking guy with a mustache got up and said, "Why are we voting for something that you're not going to enforce?" And they said, and I'm gonna quote, Koenig, that's his name, right? Koenig said, "We will amend this before we start enforcing it." That's exactly what I was told, not just here, but also at the BOCC, when I went there and went to that meeting also and said, "Hey, why are you guys voting for something that you're not gonna enforce? You've had six years to amend this. I don't want to make you feel bad, but we did it in a month." So, you know, if you want to fix it to make it tolerable, you can. I prefer not to have it at all. And for everybody out here who thinks that this can get fixed here, it can't. There's only one guy in this room that can fix this, and that's at the BOCC. I need you people to look around the room and see how many of these people are gonna show up at the BOCC and give their three minutes there, because that's where it's gonna matter. Once those people are inconvenienced, they will fix this. Until they are, they are the Perump Town Board. We all got close when the Perump Town Board got folded up because that's our county commissioner's de facto job. That's 90% of what they handle now. The whole county got hosed by that. We're all paying the price for it. And these poor guys have to deal with those problems every day, and we are too far away. Until we go to their meetings, talk for three minutes politely, Justice, and do not irritate anybody so that we can take their time. If they have to sit through 60 of us talking for three minutes at every single county commissioner meeting, I was close. Every county commissioner meeting, they will put this on the agenda. That's why the rules are written this way. You can't talk about anything that's on the agenda so that large crowds can force something to be put on the agenda so that crowd will shut the hell up. We have to be that crowd. We have to show up. And we have to force them to put this on their agenda so they can take it off of us. Nobody here can fix it.
Good evening, guys. My name is Paul Lemus, L-E-M-U-S. I was on that planning committee with Lab and Mr. Bosta. The first committee that we put into place was actually Ed Goodheart, Frank Ritz, Mr. Bosta, and Lab. And our job was to try and amend the area plan and to avoid some of this that we saw coming down the pipeline back then. And Lab was absolutely correct. He got up and told everybody that this day was gonna happen. So, my skill's real estate. I've done real estate for 28 years. I'm a Nevada Real Estate Licensed Agent. My license number is 47810. And I'm here today, I've got clipboards in the back there to get some information. If other folks would like to protest this, maybe even sign a petition, we're gonna be organizing that as well. I want to tell everybody, we have hope. Okay, we've got a lot of hope. We've got good, powerful people in place right now. We've got Mr. DeLee, who has not only already filed an appeal to this, but he has also filed a federal class action suit. It's not right. It was passed under false pretenses. I'd like you all to go back and review the Board of County Commissioner meeting on September 4th, 2019, where both commissioners were talking about, oh, oh. Oh, Lurinda Whitman said, "You've gotta think about this before you pass a countywide building permit." Donna Cox said, "These towns have their own codes, so you have to abide by that. And we need to make amendments to this before we pass it," but she went ahead and passed it anyway. We have Deborah Strickland, who I appreciate. I've done a lot of real estate transactions with her through the years in Perump. However, I believe she could and should have recused herself from the vote because she holds a contractor license. So, these are all valid concerns that we have, but I want you to know there is hope. There is faith for all of us here, guys. We have things in place, not only Mr. Goodheart, who is the head of the water board that's working over there, trying to protect our water, that our valuable water is being attacked here. It's really a bigger picture, and it's important that we all stay together because it's my opinion that this is when they always move on us. This is when they always attack. We start going at each other instead of organizing and uniting. And right now, it might be the most important place for us to consider uniting. Let's get the communications clear. Let's help each other out. And let's really look at the big picture of what's going on here. So out of my 28 years in real estate practice, I grabbed my real estate book just to look into this. I think, what are they doing? Well, they condemned somebody's home. So I look at the book and I see condemnation. But condemnation in every real estate book I look at is associated with eminent domain. But when you file eminent domain, you have to pay fair market value. You have to compensate the people for their lands. If you get in an important issue like this, you have to look into the history. Go back to UNLV. Look up the archives of this town. Look up the history of when they went to Ash Meadows. In 1964, they locked the farmers' wells. They took over the lands. They took them on a bus and hiked them over here to Bakersfield and said, "Now, live your life. You're out of here." They're doing that same thing now. And it's important that we organize and we get smart because this is when we get paid. We're at the end, guys. We're the ones who held out the longest. We're holding on to our lands. We're holding on to our rights and our property values. If they want to come into our jurisdiction and force their hand, organize, join the class action, and they're gonna pay for it. That's all I have to say.
Collette Johnson, J O A Geneswin. I forgot something earlier, and this is an announcement for all of you and an assignment for you. When my friends over here got their condemnation notice a couple of weeks ago, I got a copy of it. On it, there is a URL to check how to appeal. So I typed that URL into my computer. It leads nowhere. Please tell me why the appeal URL in your condemnation notice leads to nothing.
I have no idea. I'll look when we get to it.
Yes, I need you to figure that out because if anybody gets one of these notices here or Perump, they need to know what to do. So they should not get a URL that leads to an error code. Please fix it. And I think that, based on what we've heard tonight, that two bits of prosecution should be dropped. They absolutely should be dropped. We have unequivocally, by your words and by Scott Maddox's words, there is no jurisdiction. So why did Robert Hetchison go to court on a criminal charge for a civic, a civil violation, excuse me? And why are these young, this young family being sent out of their home? When they can't afford to pay rent, they're living on a piece of property that all they have to cover is their taxes. You know, you're gonna take a family of five and put them on the street based on arbitrary things. I think that we have made the absolute unequivocal, you know, statement, et cetera. We have made our case that you have no jurisdiction for those two prosecutions and any others. I want to see them rock, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Collette.
Hi, I'm Monae Evans, E V A N S. I've been out here for 35 years. And I have on video, I will put it on YouTube, but it's on Facebook also, that one of your code enforcement officers, Suzie, came out to my property on video three times, said, "I don't know what I'm doing. I don't know what I'm doing." So why is she sending codes when I'm not even the owner of my property, my brother is? Nobody reached out to her. But yet you guys have a redemption thing on my fence. I have three kids, one with a disability, and you're gonna kick me out? That's what you, Steve.
So as far as the video, I haven't seen that, so I'd be interested in seeing it. But, so, I mean, they have to go through the process. When they determine there's a violation, you know, there's a whole series of notices. The first violation notice, there's a second violation notice, final violation notice. They don't just immediately go out and kick someone on their property. So, you know, they have to follow the entire procedure. And sometimes it gets towards the end when there's not compliance and that's when citations are issued and things like that.
Okay, but when you're not the owner of a property and never notified the owner of a property, and we never went in front of a judge, nothing? I have until, listen, Amerosa, I have until December 6th to find a place because I'm getting, my home is getting condemned. I'm grandfathered in to Amerosa. I live right off a school lane. I have been there for a long, long time. I've been out in this valley for 35 years. My dad used to do the trash out in this valley, have a business, everything else. A lot of these people know me from when I was little. Okay, I don't speak much at town hall meetings. I come, I observe. But this is too far. I have a child with a disability, and you're gonna kick us out? You know, this is not right. We are an incorporated town. Therefore, if we have any questions with the town or any, or neighbors or anything else, we come to our board. That's why we have our town board. And it looks like a few of them are not in here right now, probably out in the public. But we have a town board every month. This is the questions we come to ask our board. We don't need Perump. We don't need the IPC. We don't need you guys. You guys stay in Perump. And if anybody, California, go back to California. Take those codes out because Amerosa Valley does not need it. We do not want it. We do not need it. We have, if a fire happens, we get together, we meet in this gym, and we help that family in need. Okay, we know, if somebody dies, we're right here in this building, helping them, pick them to pieces. You guys are coming in and forcing all this stuff. No, go back. Go. We don't want you. We don't want this IPC stuff. That's why all of us here today, and most of us are online watching it, that can't make it. Guaranteed, they're saying no. We did a vote online. The answers were no. Go back. And if you don't like it and you're not a resident here, go back to wherever you came from, California, New Mexico, wherever. This is Amerosa. We stick up for our people. Thank you.
Good evening. Caroline Logue, L-O-G-U-E. I spoke with Paul Lemus over the phone for about an hour, I think it was, found out what was happening here. I've lived in Perump for 20 years and I have seen the difference of the growth of not only in Perump but in many other areas of Nye County. The fact is that you mentioned the town board of Perump a number of times. The fact is that you mentioned the town board of Perump a number of times, many people have. You do have a town board. You should be thankful for that. You need to be in front of them, as it was suggested, as often as you can, as well as the county commissioners. They are the people you need to talk with, as well as your state legislators. They have the down type of pressure that they can also put into place. So you need to make your friends, your enemies your friends, because they're the ones that could help you in the ultimate result of what you want. The town board of Perump had been disbanded by the county commissioners. There is an effort now that I wanted to let you know to put in place another town board for Perump. If you know anybody in Perump or you're visiting there, encourage people to vote for it in June of 2026 when the primaries are held. It's an initiative that will be on the agenda. Right now, there's petitions going around for 4,000, uh, 4,000 people to sign those petitions to get it on the initiative, as an initiative on the ballot. You're correct when people said that the town of Perump needs a town board. It is an unincorporated town, as you are, but it does have rights, and you need leadership that will help you get those codes in place that will protect you and codify them, make sure that you have them established. There is a process that's in the constitution of Nevada called the local, not the local, the home rule. Home rule is what our country, our state was based on. Everybody has the rights of their property and their person. In 2012, that constitution was amended to include Dillon's law. And Dillon's law broadened out the ability for local counties to come in and take certain responsibilities in enforcement and control and population build-out and development and things like that. So it's kind of vague and ambiguous as to how that Dillon's law could encompass and overtake a home rule. But that is something you should look into and make sure that what's in the Nevada constitution is something that will protect you and help you. And that's what we're trying to do in Perump with our efforts to get our own town board back. So enjoy yours, you need it. Thank you.
Lenny Davis, D A V I S. Um, I'm an investigator, okay? I'm retired, but I'm still a private investigator. An investigator collects the evidence and presents everything. He doesn't make a, he doesn't make a judgment on, based on what he doesn't know. He goes out and finds the facts. A couple of things that has come to my attention just in this meeting tonight is the planning commission has the code enforcement people, I'm sorry, I misspoke, planning commission, but the, their enforcement code people, by his admission, haven't done any training. These gentlemen will tell you right here that one of the fastest ways for an agency to get sued is failure to train. Now, these people have gone out untrained, and they have charged an individual, in my understanding, and forgive me if I'm coming in on the back end of it. Yes, sir. Four individuals, excuse me. Four individuals have been charged by people who are not, number one, law enforcement officers and haven't had training in what they're supposed to do and self-imposed by the IPMC. They have such a vague, well, this is the way it is. It's so vague, how can you charge someone? Right now, I'm not an attorney. I wish, I almost wish I had Esquire at the back of my name because I really would like to bring a suit against Nye County for the, well, I know, but they failed to train people who are going out and they are affecting people's lives. Now, when you say it's a misdemeanor, sure, it's not a felony, but it's still an arrest record, it's still a conviction record, it is still a record on their, on their name, which is, if you're doing that with people who are not trained and not certified, that is, that's a crime in and of itself. Thank you.
Okay, we're about to wrap this up. Commissioner DeBord, I would like you to speak.
Thank you, Bruce Shabore, J A B B O U R. Uh, wow, a lot of information, and I took a lot of notes. Uh, just to clarify a few things. The town board of Perump, and I was living in Perump at the time, was not disbanded by the county commissioners. It was, it was due to a vote. It was the vote of the people that voted to disband that board. What you have here is an elected town board. An elected town board of specifically two that I have worked with extensively over the past few years to fight for Amargosa and the people of Amargosa and the water of Basin 230 due to the Rovers Metals Canadian group that wanted to come here so close to Amargosa Valley and do their exploratory drilling so close to Ash Meadows. That was Carolyn Mike. I met with senators, Congress to stop them, BLM. And BLM was here in front of you as I was here at that meeting. And they said, according to their criteria, they, they have to follow guidelines in order to, in order to deny an application for exploratory drilling. Now, do I have jurisdiction over the government, the federal government? No. But what did I say? I said, what about the people of Amargosa? Crystal, the Shoshone Tumby, Tumby Shaw tribe, Southern Beatty, what about their rights? Do they not take precedence over a Canadian drilling company, by the way, that's under NAFTA and not under our county and local and state rules and regulations and NRSs and But I was still the voice to fight professionally along with your board members. And why only two? Because just like the B O C C, we're only allowed to meet two of us at a time. That's it. And then we come before you publicly and discuss things. So I just wanted to clarify that and remind you of what I've been doing for Amargosa. And I am not the enemy. I'm your friend. And I will continue to be and work hard for you. And the rest of District One, that starts northern Perump and the rest of Nye County. I won't push the envelope, but I will clarify because it's been mentioned. In 2011, I challenged Commissioner to put something like this forward. And he was the chairman of the board. And then I challenged the former director of planning, Darrell Lacy, if you remember Darrell Lacy, who came up to Tonopah and wanted to implement this up in Tonopah. So in 2019, this was passed by the B O C C, and it was mentioned, the five commissioners, I was not one of them at the time. I took my seat in 2021. Why they passed this, I don't know. In 2021, Commissioner Frank Carbone, who you, most of you know, who would come and represent you when the other commissioner wasn't available. Him and I fought with the other commissioners and demanded that anything like this would have to come before the respective town board, your town board of everything that happened. That didn't happen with this situation and why we're here tonight, unfortunately. But that's why we're here. Your chair, Carolyn Allen, asked Steve Osborne, the new director, of less than a year, by the way, okay? We're beating him up, but he's not the one who authored this. He's not the one who passed it. He's not the one that, that forced it upon us throughout the county. But because it's been passed and it's a bill and resolution, he's obligated to enforce it temporarily until we change it. This IPMC can come back before us at the B O C C. And Lab was absolutely right. I'm okay if I'm there from 10 o'clock in the morning till 10 o'clock at night, listening to public comment. Because you are the ones who, who ask us to do this or to do that. And I will apologize to Scott. We have mutual friends. Scott, I don't have a recording of you leaving a message, and I apologize, but we'll talk. I think you have my personal number. It's 911. So please remember, please remember that this has to do with health, safety, and welfare. These, these things all need to be considered. And as I challenged the commissioners in the past, before I was commissioner, I said, what's not working? We don't have a fatality. We don't have hospitalization. We don't even have a paper cut on our finger because of what's in our yard or what's been built and what's 100 years old. Where I grew up in New England, we have a home that's still erect today, built in 1636. They came over with the pilgrims to Mayflower, and they settled. And that home is still, is still existing today, just like all of our homes here in Nye County. I came to Nye County in 1994. I think it was Mr. Powell who said he was here in 91. I said, oh, he beat me by three years. But I'm still here, and I'm still fighting for you. There are some very alarming codes in this, in this document that I'm not happy with. If you remember, there were three master plans that were presented in Perump. One was voided, another one was taken care of, one was voided, the other one, and now that's the one that's in place. Somebody said boilerplate. I wrote down cookie cutter. One size doesn't fit all. And they're trying to, they, who's they? I was to be, I'm part of the county. Steve's part of the county, but Steve doesn't work for me. Do you realize that he doesn't work for me? Okay, we work together. He's a director. He's not an elective position. Okay? He's hired, and he's so far, he's doing a good job, and I appreciate you not beating him up too badly. Your message has been loud and clear. I think we all know the marching orders. I couldn't take questions, not to be disrespectful, but I couldn't take questions, and I couldn't speak upon the unfortunate situations that have been going on with legal. It's a different branch of government. Unfortunately, that was the direction that it went in. And if it can be reversed, that would be a win-win situation for all of us. This isn't going to work up in Tonopah. Somebody said, oh, maybe it'll work in Tonopah, in Ran Mountain. I canceled the meeting tonight. I was supposed to be in and scheduled to be in Ran Mountain. They meet on Tuesday nights, and they had some very important issues tonight. But I was asked to be here, to come and out, to speak to you and be here for you and work with Steve and Carolyn and Mike and Richard and Bobby. Okay? We have to work separately. I can't work with them all together. And so after you amend, okay? After you amend this vote, you amend this, this document to abolish this document, and you have the right to do that. And it's on your agenda after this meeting starts. It'll then come before, before us, the B O C C, with a loud, loud message. You want to do a petition, as, as Lab, excuse me, Lab said, come to B O C C and voice your opinion. You don't have to drive all the way to Perump. You can call in if you're unable to drive. Boy, will that message be loud and clear. I'm not working against, I think you know my position. You knew what I was going to say, didn't you? Because I've said it before, you just didn't hear me say it. But I want the message to be clear that there were probably college kids, nothing wrong with college kids. They help, we help make this society successful. But when they're in college and somebody was lazy, they said they were lazy, they put something together, and unfortunately, nobody really read it in detail. You have. We have. Okay? And I'm concerned about it. And so don't let this, don't let this mustard seed, huh, as it's written, just fall by the wayside and go home and say, oh, everything's going to be okay. It's not going to be okay until we reverse this. You don't want it in Amargosa, because that's not how it's written, just as Scott said on the front page, even though it's been revised, it's Perump Valley Regional District. And it sure does seem like they were trying to expand the Perump Regional Planning District. We don't have the staff for that. We don't have the staff for these, the code enforcement to come to Amargosa and to Tonopah and the rest of the county. We have 18,000 square miles just in your district. Me as your commissioner, I'm all over the place, not ignoring you.
So you're the commissioner?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So you carry a lot of weight?
Well, I'm only 185 pounds.
You're the commissioner? The people have spoken. I personally?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, thank you. But it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. I'm explaining the process, okay? You come to the commission, because I'm one of five commissioners. I don't want, okay? I don't want to bring this forward without hearing your voice. Unfortunately, you'll be, it'll be redundancy. But it needs to be done. Okay? So the other commissioners, oh, and by the way, there are currently two commissioners that are on the board that were here when this was that are on the board that were here when this was passed. They seemed to object to it, they opposed it, but they passed it for whatever reason. Why? Because when it comes to health and safety and saving lives, it doesn't matter if we know the governor, the senators, it doesn't matter. As soon as we say that, that somebody's life is in danger, if we pass this or we don't pass that, everybody will back off and say the liability is not upon us and we're going to agree. And that may have been the reason, okay? But let's be realistic, let's do it the right way. I want to thank you all for being so, most of you, for being respectful. But I understand, I'm not saying anybody was disrespectful, but your passion and because you care, just like we care, I care. And it's not you and we and us and them and I'm not, again, I'm not your enemy. So get to know me, because I am your friend and I work hard for you and I'll continue to work hard for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. We're running late. Yeah, we're going to one more and we're going to close the public.
I said I wasn't going to come up here, but I am. My name's Emma Velador, E-M-M-A-V-E-L-A-D-O-R. I grew up in PRRUP, Nevada, on the Williams Ranch. Maybe some of you are familiar. My father was a farmer. I was there till the age of about 14. Went to California to get my formal education. And I said that I would come back to PRRUP because PRRUP is so dear to me. And once in a while, I visit PRRUP, I go to the trees that are left, the old trees that are still there on the PRRUP ranch and I walk around and, you know, linger on past childhood memories. And when I decided to come back and look at the properties in PRRUP, PRRUP had just become too big. And therefore, I looked at Amargosa and I love Amargosa. I love Amargosa because it doesn't have an HOA, Homeowners Association, and it doesn't have, it's not incorporated. PRRUP is almost looking like it's incorporated. The vast open space, the freedom, okay? And when I purchased my property, it's not like, it's a very humble property. And to have this ordinance come in and now say, oh, we don't like your property, it's not aesthetic or appealing to us, that's not ethical. So I just want to reiterate that I am not for this, what is it? The international property maintenance. Yes, I do believe in the health and safety and whatever the other part of the clause was, but it's got, it's to the extreme. And it's like this blanket approach for everybody. It's like a one size for all of us. And we are not all one size, okay? So it does not benefit a lot of people here. I've spoken to many of my neighbors and they are in disagreement with this international property maintenance code. And I wanted to add to the commissioner, if he's still here. In Nevada, when a person with special needs, okay, and that's a special, a person who has disabilities, has been forced to leave their home in Nevada, they may have defenses under federal and state fair housing laws, as well as specific protections for vulnerable individuals. So before code enforcement was called on these people, did we take a moment to look at, they're disabled. They, they said it, they said it here, so I can say it. They have disabilities. There are laws against that, federal laws. And this international property maintenance code is not federal. So I think we're breaking laws here. All right? So that's all I had to say. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Emma. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment and adjourn this town hall because we're going to take a 10-minute break because our town board meeting is following. We'll regroup and...